Okay, the meeting will now be called to order. Okay, we've got a public hearing, zoning text amendment. The Lee County Board of Suicide and Murder will hold a public hearing on December 15th, 2020 at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnsville, Virginia, to solicit input on the following proposed zoning text amendment. To allow recovery home for substance abuse, substance abuse, including alcohol victims operated by faith-based organizations and not licensed by the state, which may offer workforce education and/or training, counseling services, and life skills to assist in transitioning into a productive member of society, but no medications other than those prescribed by a licensed physician for medical reasons and not as a treatment for substance abuse. A recovery home facility would house no more than sixteen residents at any one time. Recovery home facilities would be allowed to by special use permit only.
Mr. Chairman, this was presented before the Planning Commission last month. In the current ordinance, as of now, the only type of alcohol and substance abuse facility that's allowed is one that is in a state-approved program. It's a facility that has to be licensed either by the State Board of Health or the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Most of those, I'm not sure if there's anything outside of those, there probably are in various counties, but as far as being state-licensed, most of those have jurisdiction under the Department of Corrections. And so, since that's the only thing that was allowed in ours, what was being proposed would not have been allowed here. The facilities that are allowed now, which are approved by the state, are only allowed in the Village Commercial Zone. So what's being proposed here is a fairly narrow definition on substance abuse and alcohol recovery home. It has to be operated by a faith-based organization. It will not be licensed by the state. And then it gives a description of the types of services and counseling that may be provided there in assistance to these men or women who may be seeking to put their lives back together. These would be allowed in both the A1 District and the Village Commercial District. And so, that's what's being presented here tonight.
Do we have anyone here on that behalf?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Let me make a correction. It'd be allowed in the Village Commercial District, just like what's existing at the present time, not the A1.
Okay, if you would, sorry, I can tip up. Would you all come up, state your name, address, and we'll keep it at three minutes?
Yes, John Raisside, 124 White Top Tribe, Pennington Gap, Virginia. Our goal, basically, what we're trying to do is help men, some possibly coming out of prison, others here from the county, to help them get off their drugs and their alcohol. And obviously, it's a faith-based program, so we'll be speaking to them along those lines, concerning their relationship with the Lord, be educating, training, helping them, trying to guide them into a new life, so that when they come there, they'll have workbooks to do, they'll have chores. We're trying to establish a family atmosphere. A lot of these men growing up came from rough backgrounds, and what we're trying to do is to bring them together, but with a sense of new family and a sense of responsibility within that family. And it'll be a 24/7 program. We'll have a man there 24 hours a day. He would be the house manager. I would play the role of director. And we will have volunteer help, so that there'll always be somebody there on the premises watching the men. They'll have to sign in, sign out, we'll know where they're going, what they're doing, so they're not roaming around the community and getting into trouble. We've contacted the community college in the area. We're only about, hopefully, if we can get the building over there on 23rd, we're only about five minutes away. So they'd like to sit down and talk to us about working with our men and helping to develop them. And obviously, we'll be contacting employers in the area, because that's part of it. A man comes in unemployed, he may not have a license, he may not have a car, and so we're going to help the man go through every step, so that by the time he leaves, his character's developed to the point where he's not highly motivated to get drunk or to do alcohol anymore. He's got at least a part-time job, and he has a place to live, has a car, has his license, and he's moving back into the society. So that's the basic goals that we're trying to achieve.
Questions from the board?
Now, what is your qualifications for this job?
Pastor, college degree, been ministering for forty-five years, much of it been with inner-city people, going to the more difficult, counseling, mentoring, developing. Last four years, I was in a home up in Vermont, and same type of, simply trying to take that and bring it here. And so, we had men coming out of jail or within the community, sometimes people would come in off the streets, and we would work with them, trying to help them to develop. So those four years were really, I probably wouldn't be standing here tonight if those four years hadn't been in my background, but certainly it became a learning experience. We actually lived on the grounds. So, you know, we were 24/7, had the opportunity to see where the men were at, to feel where they were at. And I have a drug and alcohol background, so when I sit down with a man, it's not like, "I can't understand why you would do anything like that." It's like, "No, I do understand," and wanting to help. So that's basically where I'm at. I've been a pastor for years.
You are a pastor?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Church planner, pastor, whatever it takes to establish a ministry. And so, and that's basically what we're trying to do, establish a ministry, develop it, and then move forward.
Where, I'm not familiar, where'd you say you was going to put this at?
The Old Hardest Home, Wolf of 23rd and Jasper.
Is that in a community, or is that in an isolated area?
Pretty much so, yeah.
It's kind of across the field from the fire department, nowhere proper.
Yeah, it's not like where you have kids running around up and down the street, or... And again, in Vermont, in that house, we had, our house was on the corner, it was in a community. You had children living in the next apartment over, which was thirty feet away. Thirteen years, it was, been in existence for thirteen years, we've never had a problem with children, or really with the community. In that house, we basically shut things off. The men stayed in the backyard. If they were going out to do something, they stayed in the backyard, so it was fenced off. But again, the men were walking up and down the street, they had to go to various classes and so on, but it wasn't really a major problem.
Mr. Chairman, the question tonight is not a specific location. This is just in the Village Commercial Zone, anywhere in the county. This is just a text amendment that would allow this type of use by special use. If this is approved, this group would then come back and apply for a special use permit and have to go through hearings before the Planning Commission and Board at that point for a specific location.
For a different location, because that was a follow-up question, because I know you were first looking at this site there and saying, "Troll." Is that correct? Is this the same program?
No, it's a different location now.
That's what I'm saying, but it's basically the same program, just a different location?
Yes, yes.
So is that one off the table, then?
Yes.
Okay. Because my concern was, you know, I had a boatload of people that, you know, were concerned with it being so close to that elementary school over there.
Exactly, exactly.
Which put me in opposition also, you know, for it being that close to school.
Right.
Because I actually have a grandchild there, and I don't want to speak for him, but I feel like I'm just speaking for everybody that has a child there.
This is the old building, was that?
Old Hardest Home.
Yeah.
Yeah, it had been used for years, it's been closed for ten years. It's, it is, the rooms are there, it's laid out perfectly for our use. You still have some old beds in there that the kids used. And so, it's laid out kind of like an institution, and you have all these different rooms. You probably have about eighteen rooms, perhaps more, in the facility, and it's just sitting there. Been sitting there for years, just waiting for us to come and settle down, and to help some men get settled down, get straightened out with not just the Lord Jesus Christ, but with themselves, with the community, with their families. That's what we're all about. We want to see something good happen in the lives of people. We're burdened, we are probed over this situation, we're tired of it. We want to see something happen, so we've been contacting the pastors. Come on, wake up, let's get the job done. And so, we're starting to buy into it. We're talking to individuals, let's do something. Tired, these pastors should be tired of just meeting people who are on drugs and alcohol and their family members at a funeral. That needs to end. It needs to be, "Hey, come on over here, get some help, let's get straightened out, and let's move forward," so that we don't have to have all these unnecessary funerals here in the county. That's what we're all about.
Well, we've had questions on the flip side of that, too, you know. You know, you meet those things, some of these folks that have funerals, that's been caused by this, too, because of alcohol and drugs, so it's a double-sided sword.
Yeah, yeah, it gets very complicated.
Yeah.
It really does. And as you sit down with the men, most of the men that I've met through this are humble, hurting people. There's some that have anger issues, but for the most part, they've been hurt, and that's why they're angry. They're frustrated with the way they were raised. They feel like they themselves have been abused, and they've come to the point where they just don't care. So what we're trying to do is to help them begin caring again, settle down. It'll be a six-month to a year-long program, so it's not where they're going in, and twenty-eight days later, once their health insurance is up, they're out. No, it'll be, they'll be out when they're ready to go, when there's a healing process that's actually taking place. Because a man can't, a man's just starting to begin to think, he's just starting to come out of the fog after twenty-eight days in a rehabilitation center. He needs a longer period of time. And the only reason it's twenty-eight days is because the insurance runs out.
Are you going to help? We'll find jobs.
Yes, sir. Yeah. If we can find somebody that's willing to hire him, we'll get him a job. And we have people, and we should have more, that are willing to take a chance, and that's obviously a part of it. You're willing to risk it, you see? So you have a facility over here, you hired fifteen, twenty people, you're willing to work along with this man. And we'll be looking for contractors, maybe just small contractors, where a guy needs a man to work with them for a couple of weeks. We'll contact those people, too, and just put out the net, trying to communicate the need. But obviously, to bring a person up out of the miry clay, somebody's willing to get a little dirty. And if they're not, then my attitude is shame, and then take a risk, you see? You might get your nose clipped from time to time, but maybe, just maybe, a man will actually make it.
Did you say max is six months that you will?
No, it'll be six months to a year, but if a man needs a few more months, or even another six months, every one's different. There's some that pick up a case, they catch it, and they run. And you can see, it becomes just so obvious their life actually changes, others a little bit slower. And it's not, it's not an easy business, very, very messy, very, very complicated. But it's a necessary business, unfortunately, in light of the, our social fabric and confusion which is taking place here in our society. These things are necessary, these places are needed.
And you guys, you know, you look at like this particular spot, do you go around the neighborhood there and ask around, see, you know, if they're willing to put any kind of effort into helping, or if there's any opposition, or what their oppositions might be, or are you just picking locations and think, "Well, we'll just do it here?" Because personally, you know, I'm not totally opposed to the program. I mean, I think if, you know, like you, you know, people need to be helped, but you've got people that are, you know, that are scared to live in those areas, too. Some of them may be older individuals, some of them may be, they're alone by themselves all the time. And you say you have one manager on location for sixteen people?
Well, we don't have sixteen people.
But you said you could house up to sixteen people?
Yeah.
There could be sixteen people there.
And if we need to locate more help, then that's exactly what we will do. We're planning to start out with around six men, six to eight men. There's two floors, eight men on the floor. We're not going to open up that second floor right away. We're going to try and keep everybody on the first floor and develop it, see how it goes. Everybody needs to learn the program, in a sense, I mean, I understand the program, but everybody else is just learning. So we're not trying to bring in a gang and then do a lot of confusion. We'll start with about six to eight men, and then we'll develop from there.
Okay, where are these people coming, men coming from?
If they can come from the county, that'll be great.
Are they newly released from jail?
We have a meeting with the sheriff on Thursday, and we'll talk to him, find out what he thinks. If there's a need in that area, then we're open to meet that need. I'm not too concerned who the men are, especially if a man's coming out of jail, at least he's sober, you see? So that's helpful. And so, we're willing to work with that man. But we like to keep a look, but we'd like to have people from this community there in that facility.
Funding, where's the funding coming from, did you say?
Individuals, churches right now. We haven't done any groundwork at all.
But you're 501(c)(3) now, right?
I want you to take this card and call this lady, and let she help you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to what Mr. Poe said, really, they're not here, they're here more generally. Can anybody start a facility with a special use permit is really the question for the board tonight, not do they have a good plan for this? Frankly, I don't think they even have to have a plan tonight, it's just, can somebody do this if they have a good enough plan, and then that would come back and forward? Be the Planning Commission, right? And then they would lay out, "This is where we want to do it, this is what the program looks like," et cetera. But really, the question tonight is just in general, do we want people to be able to start facilities like this if they have their ducks in a row? And for me, I think the answer is yes.
Well, you know, that's why we're asking questions, so we make sure they have their ducks in a row. You've been dealing with them, so you, I mean, you've been talking with them, so actually you know what they're, how they are, but the rest of us haven't. You know, I liked all the answers that I can come up with, you know?
I guess what I'm saying, in fairness to Jack, he may not have all those answers, because in his discussion with me, I told him it's more of a general thing that should be told before the board, for the nuts and bolts of it. I don't know how prepared he is or was to speak on that.
Well, ask a question, and I'll answer the question, basically, that's what it comes down to. If you want a schedule, do you want a 24/7 schedule? The details, is that exactly what we're going to be teaching them? I mean, it's all, it's all there.
Well, I think, I don't think it's much for me a question of what your schedule is at that particular, you know, the business you're in. I guess my biggest concern is, is like I say, if you get sixteen people, and say you do get extra, you know, in a facility like that, that's a pretty good size area right there, you know? And you say, you check, you sign in and you sign out, I mean, who's responsible for those people when they sign out? I understand when they sign in, you are responsible, but who's responsible when they sign out?
Yes, we, so they sign out with the idea that they're telling us where they're going. There's some men, they have a doctor's appointment. So they sit down, how it works out, on a Monday morning, we have a meeting, house meeting. The men, we estimate, "Do you have any appointments this week?" We write all those appointments down, they have to verbalize all this before us. So we write all the appointments down, we're asking them, "Hey, so you have a doctor's appointment, who's coming to pick you up for that appointment? Your mother, your father, your sister?" We do not know the people. We ask, we need them to call us before they pick you up and they take you out of here, because we don't know what's going to happen once you leave this facility. And so, it becomes detailed. We're trying, we do not want to frustrate the men, but at the same time, it's a place where discipline is necessary, and communication is necessary. And so, when a man has a simple doctor's appointment, questions are asked about that the next guy. He's got another issue, he's trying to get into school. So he's supposed to be at a school at nine o'clock in the morning tomorrow, so who's going to get him up there? So we'll have a van, we can use that, and to get him up there if he doesn't have his own way to the school. And so, everything is, details, details, details. You have to watch the men constantly without making them feel as if they're being watched constantly. We need to know what they're doing during the day, at night, and so, so, yeah, so every circumstance is, it's always qualified. Every time somebody's doing something, there's questions always asked about, "What are you doing? Why are you doing it? Can my parents come over this weekend? Or can my girlfriend come over Saturday?" Who is your girlfriend? You need to talk to her. Was she helpful, or was she part of your drug addiction problem? And if she, if she's got an issue, then she probably isn't going to be allowed to come. Or perhaps a man, or a person will be in that room as they, as they meet. So it gets, again, detailed, it gets complicated, every man has to be treated as an individual. There are some that you can trust after a while, there's some that you'll never really trust, no matter how long they're there. But that's, yeah, that's all, that's all part of it. They're not going to be allowed to walk out of the place and walk along the road. It's, that's not going to happen. When I've been there maybe four or five times, I've looked, I've never seen, I've never seen one person. I'm staying, I'm on top of this hill, I'm looking down, I can see a house across the road, another house, and I know by the church, there's a few other houses. Maybe I've seen one person over there in a car, but other than that, it's a pretty isolated place. So a man would have to walk about a block, maybe a block and a half, to get to the first home. So it's, I'm just comparing it, like I was in New York City for about twenty-five years, and row homes, right in the middle of that block, you'd have a sober living facility. You might have ten guys there in the house. That's just, just the way it is. Here, it's a lot, it's a lot more country, obviously. There's a lot more room. So if the men go out, they're going out to play a game of baseball, or maybe a game of basketball, but it's, everybody knows where everybody's at.
So, question on that. Go ahead. I mean, I understand what he wants and everything, but I would still like to hear from the community for why I would like to commit to this.
The community has no input when they, there's no application for a community tonight.
I understand that.
That's, I mean, I just wanted to be clear, this has nothing to do with a specific location. And there will be public hearings if and when they come back for a specific location, there'll be public hearings to allow the community to do.
The board's got to hold a case this to go to the next step, right?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying, yes.
But that's exactly what this is. This is public expression for the purposes there, for the general purpose.
Yeah, what I have found, too, people's concern, it's almost like, "That stranger who's on drugs, he's going to cause me some kind of havoc, or I'm going to feel threatened if he's in my community." And then when these people happen to meet the men that are in houses like that, especially in a community like this, all of a sudden, it's like, "Oh, hey, there's Cousin Willie. Hey, how you doing? I know you, I went to school with you, didn't I? I'm not so bad." It's like, "Boy, I thought you were going to have some..." You understand, this is community here. People know everybody here. I mean, that guy over there, he's been drug-free for about a year now. He's involved with the drug court. His life's been transformed by the power of God and with the help of other people. And that's what we want to do. We want to, we want to see that happen over and over and over again. So he's community. When we go to a church and speak, the people don't come around there to me after the service, they come over to him, "Hey, how you doing, man? Hey, Matt, what's going on?" Everybody knows Matt, nobody knows me. But when houses like, like that house opens up, it's going to be friends and relatives that are going to be there. It's going to be people there that other people know here. So I don't think people are going to be in the mind, it's like, "Oh," it's an intimidation. But in reality, because it's a very social world, and it's a very small community here, everybody's going to know everybody. I think it's going to be really healthy, because if a few men get fixed up and healed up, word of mouth is going to pass around really fast. And other people who have an interest in getting their lives straightened out will want to come there, too. So I think it's really a fantastic opportunity, and I think it'll be a very, a great help to the community here, because we will be helping men. And what I've found, not every man makes it in the program, but here's what happens. They get so much from the program, they're, when they leave, they're not necessarily ideal, and there's some men who may have to be put out after six months, but it changes their life. That six months in that place will change it. Now, they won't be exactly what we hoped they were going to be, but something happens in that man. He sees something, and he begins to move forward in a different light. And so, a year or two later, what was happening up there at that house, if a man was asked to leave, we hear about him, involve him, he's doing good. He had straightened out, he wasn't on drugs anymore. So it's, short range and long range changes in current people's lives. It's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity.
Now, was that building used for the same thing a few years ago?
For children, for teenagers and children, yes. So again, the facility itself is set up, it was established to house people, to put people in there. up, it was established to house people, to put people in there. And so it's ideal for what we want.
This is only for adults?
Yeah.
What age? What age range?
Eighteen or up?
Eighteen or up.
Yeah. Legal, whatever's legal, eighteen, seventeen? Okay, any more questions? Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Would I be permitted to speak from? Would I be permitted to speak?
Yeah, it still is.
Mask up for one second. Josh Osteen, pastor of Pennington, Pennington. Thank you all for coming here tonight. Just wanted to say about the questions, a lot of this is my fault of bringing the ideas for this recovery home. We have a recovery ministry on Monday nights at the church that we started at 6:30 on Monday nights to bring people in. I've been pastor in Pennington for 12 years. Jack Raisa, you know, I've lived here long enough to know when people come in from out of the area, they go, what are you doing here? You know? We want to know about you. Jack Raisa is the father of John Raisa, who's been my associate pastor for nine years. And so I've been at the church 12 years, John's been there with me for nine years. And that's how he got to this area. The reason that we started doing this idea of having a home is because for the years I've been at church in Pennington, we have fed these people, we have clothed these people, we have given work to them, we have done everything we can to try to help them. And what we began to realize more and more is that these people, I would hire, vacuum my church vans, pull the weeds in the flower bed, blow off the parking lot, and I would try to give them money to help them. Then they would come the next day. I've got a job, they would say, but I don't have a ride. We tried to give them a ride to a job. And eventually, you know, you get to where you can't take them anymore. Then they lose the job. They don't have a ride, they don't have a driver's license to get a car. On and on it went. And so we began to realize what was needed was a facility. Now, when we were going to go to St. Charles, it kind of got, thought that we were going to be bringing people from out of here into this area. That is not the case. This whole ministry, this whole idea, everything we've been trying to do is to help the people here, the people in our community. And so what I've always told people is, the people that are going to be in our home are the same guys that are walking by your door right now, unsupervised, with no help, no one helping them, totally on their own. The same people that knock on our church door all day long. My office has been broken into twice at the church, robbed, just Sunday. Tires were slashed in the parking lot. We've been, I mean, they steal the light bulbs. Just this last week, they busted the lock off of our building. You know, it's just on and on. So we want to help them and encourage them. And that's where this came about, is for our people in our community, like Jack said, for the guys that they went to school with, the people, for us to help them. That's who we're after. We're after this county to help these guys get help. And so that's when I came up with the idea, was to have a recovery ministry on Monday nights, and then go into the recovery home idea from me and Brother Jack discussed, to where, number one, we can help get them clean. Number two, the number one, number thing that, thing that I would see with guys, when they get a job, they couldn't get to the job. So then we said, and even our churches, said, hey, we're going to give you a van, take these guys to the job. When they're ready to get a job, get them a job. And we're going to make sure they get there, get to their doctor's appointments, get to where they need to go. So that's what the idea was, to try to help them, to help the community. You have the impact that could happen through this. If we could change just one person, think of what that person can reach and what can be done. So that's the idea. So understand when we're doing this, is that we're trying to help Lee County people. That is our goal. We want to help Lee County. I'm from here, I live on Miller Chapel Road, of course, I grew up here. My uncle was from Wise County, but my mom grew to the corner, raised in Hiltons. But I've been here long enough, I live on Miller Chapel Road. And so that's the goal, help this county, help these guys, these guys that knock on our door, the guys that vacuum my vans, the guys that work at the church. But I can only help them for a few days. And then there's times they have nowhere to go. There's a boy that I worked with not long ago, and he'd come and work, and I'd counsel him, and I'd talk to him. But guess where he had to stay the night at? With his druggie friends. That's the only place he had to stay. And so he stayed there. And it wasn't long till he was right back on the drugs, right back in the same situation. And that's when we started getting the idea, if we can get them out of that, give them some hope, give them a driver's license, give them a job, give them a ride, maybe we can break the cycle that they're in. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
I'm a little public comment, and I'm not supposed to be up here yet, but I just feel compelled to tell you all this. And I apologize, but kudos to you, gentlemen. What you all may not know about me, I'm Dr. Chris Westover. I went through a halfway house when I was 15 years old, and I lived in one of these facilities. And, but for the grace of God, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. And it was because of that halfway house that I got turned around and started on the right path. Just some things that I heard that are worrisome. Most of us already have 16 alcoholics or addicts living in our region, in our area. We might not know it, but they're already there. And they're probably a lot less dangerous and a lot, and a lot better for our community in a home like this than they are just out there right now without help. And I didn't know this was going to happen, but I just felt compelled to let you all know that I support it. I think that we need more, we need more compassion for these folks. And I probably feel that way a little bit just because of my history, but I stand before you with 32, 33, a long time history of sobriety. So, and went through some hell to get there. And most of the folks that will end up in a treatment facility want help. And they just need transportation, a leg up, somebody to kind of support them on that. So I think, once they get to this stage, it's not like you're taking convicts, you know, or, I mean, these are folks that they could do what they want. They're 18 years old, they can be in the community and move in if they want to and do whatever. And there's just, I think, maybe that peace has been lost in the community. So I just thought it was worth sharing it. I'll come back up at the right time, but I don't know, I just felt compelled to share that with you all.
Any more comment on that subject? Okay, hearing none. We'll close that one.
Chair, do you think a motion on that? I'd make a motion that we approve the zoning text amendment as the chair read previous.
Got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Certainly, I didn't hear your motion.
I made a motion to approve the zoning text amendment.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next we'll go to Lee County Court, Superior Public Court, carrying on December 50th, 2020 at 4:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia, to solicit input on proposed ordinance to adopt Virginia Code Title 18.2 Crimes and Offenses, General, and Virginia Code Title 46.2 Motor Vehicles and Their Attire. The adoption of these code titles will authorize the county of Lee to enforce and charge violation of these titles as local offenses. We have anyone here on that public's ordinance? Okay, hearing none. We'll close any statements from that.
I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, got a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have departmental reports and constitutional officers' treasures report. Everyone had a chance to look over all of that. Any questions on any of those discussions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to public expression. All right, then. Hearing no public expression, we will move on to approval amendments. Want to make a motion to approve? I got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got refund request for Elizabeth Wilder and Lawrence Henson.
Make a motion to approve, please.
Vote, both requests, yes.
Yeah.
Got a motion on the floor to approve both requests. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have payroll, county administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued. And we'll move on to delegation with Dr. Chris Westover.
Thank you. I'm smiling, everybody can't see it through this silly mask. First of all, I'd just like to thank you all for your service and for your support. Just give you a brief update on some of the college happenings. Just in related to the coronavirus, most of our courses are online this fall. We've got about 20% of our courses that are meeting in face-to-face. Those are most of our performance-based Ford courses, welding, HVAC. Our CDL program, our lineman program actually shut down last week until after January because both of our instructors got sick. So we're just, we're pausing when we have to. Most of our health science courses are all face-to-face, and our clinicals are still operating. In the last two weeks, we've had, we've actually had the most cases of coronavirus within student body and our employees that we have all semester. Up until last week, we had 23 overall cases with just two employees. And then after Thanksgiving, it kind of hit. So in the last two weeks, we've had 12 students and another 13 employees overall that have contracted the coronavirus. So we are mostly working remotely. There are some labs and things going on with campus, and we're just adjusting case by case and course by course as folks stay well. Our spring semester will look much like this fall in terms of many of courses online. Those courses can be taught synchronous or asynchronous. So some students can log in and do their work at their own pace and just take tests at the right times. And others are very coordinated, and they log in at eight o'clock, and they sit in a Zoom classroom with their instructor and their classmates and interact. So they have some flexibility in terms of the course styles that they're taking. Our realists currently running, they're running limited hours, so we've had no layoffs. Our employees were just recently given a day of recognition leave. We used some CARES Act funding to give them stipends, to assist them with the increase that they've had in terms of virtual work with increasing bandwidth or equipment that they need at home and those types of things. We also recently, you may have heard about the reemploying Virginians program. It was a, through CARES Act funding, the department, actually, the unemployment commission funded some funding through the community colleges to help those folks who had been unemployed or lost their jobs due to the coronavirus. And that initiative was very short. We only had about 30 days to try and reach out to as many unemployed folks as we could. I think we got almost 60 students or 60 folks that were eligible to take advantage of that program. So they're going into either health sciences, information technology, public safety, skilled trades, or early childhood development, and they're earning either $1,500 tuition scholarship or $3,000 tuition scholarship, depending on whether they go full or part-time. So that's been a good opportunity for some of those folks who have lost their jobs due to coronavirus. It was a small kind of definition for who fit that funding, but we were able to connect quite a few people to it. Our enrollment is looking pretty good. Our summer enrollment, we were actually ended up about 8% up, which was surprising. I think a lot of folks that were coming back from the university were picking up courses in the summer. And with the unknown coronavirus in the summer, they were getting as much out of the way as they could. Our fall enrollment is just a little less than 2% down. Lee County continues to be around 20%, 19.3% of our overall enrollment. And this spring, we're down a little bit right now. I think a lot of students, it's just kind of the nature of students to wait and get finals out of the way, and then think about the spring and enrolling and what they're going to do in the spring. So we're hoping that'll pick back up for the spring. We recently were fully approved through SAC C O C for another 10 years. So we are SAC's Commission on College Accredited for another 10 years. And in our Center for Workforce Innovation in Appalachia, the former Appalachia Elementary School is where we're running some of our workforce programs. That was recently approved as an off-campus site through that same commission. So we also started a new dental assisting program at that site. It's now fully accredited and approved as well. And that program takes about 15 students every 15 weeks or so. And I think the second pool board is getting ready to graduate tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, virtually. So you can watch that on YouTube, I guess. It's about the best we can do right now. We're hoping to be able to have at least some smaller graduation ceremonies. We're trying to figure out how we can celebrate some of our students' accomplishments this year and not just have a video thing like we did last year. We'd like to at least be able to bring them in in smaller groups and maybe do, you know, one division one day and one division another or something, but somehow celebrate those folks' accomplishments. So our dual enrollment with Lee County Schools is going very well. I think we've had some struggles, I know that we've had some struggles just with technology and this shifting back and forth to online, but we've worked really well with the school system. They've been so accommodating, extremely helpful in our dual enrollment as well. So we won't bore you with a bunch of things, but just wanted to give you a general update and certainly maintain any questions that you all may have of us. Just again, thank you for your support.
If I got any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list, we got approval of dispersments.
Motion, please be it. I'm sticking it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the list, we got finance quarterly appropriations.
There is appropriations for school system and Head Start and Social Services for three months.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that. Make the motion. Make the motion to, okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is supplemental.
We have three supplemental appropriations. Total amount of all three is $9,175. Uh, part of this, uh, in clerk's office, $2,187 is reimbursement from, uh, the State Compensation Board. $1,988 is, uh, the amount over, uh, what we had budgeted for, for the state litter control grant and it's, uh, more than what we had budgeted. And, uh, Sheriff's Department has revenue that they've received from the, uh, U.S. Deputy Sheriff's Association for a law enforcement grant in the amount of $5,000.
Okay, uh, motion for that supplemental, those supplemental appropriations. You got a second? Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we've got, uh, board appointments, new business. And again, I haven't had a chance, so I'd like to, uh, table it, uh, board appeals.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got Southwest Virginia workforce investment. Leo?
I'd like a motion that we put, uh, Supervisor Mosley on there if he still wants to.
Okay, got a motion, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, any opposed? Okay, next we got, uh, Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Services Council.
I'll make that motion, uh, chairman, to reappoint Free to Airs to the Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Service Council.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we got, uh, Southwest Regional Recreation Authority. Chris is on there now, but it, uh...
He's in time. Who's that? Chris Rock.
I'll make a motion and table that. Got a motion on the floor to table that one?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Spearhead Trailblazer Board Point E request, appointment request. Anybody have any requests for that? I've got something we have to discuss, find somebody to make what they want there. Motion to table. Yes, okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list, we got broadband expansion projects invoices.
Chairman, two separate invoices there. One, uh, both of these are from Scott County Telephone Cooperative. The first one invoice number C R L 001. This is the project that we're doing, uh, from a, a portion of the CARES Act funds that was passed through from the state. Uh, total amount of this invoice is $673,885.92. They're progressing well on these projects. The second invoice, uh, D L 001, this is a separate grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Similar type work, uh, just, just a different grant funding source. Uh, the invoice amount on that one's $327,362.52.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Both, both, both of them?
Yes.
Motion to approve, uh, both of that, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Electoral Board Request for Hazard Pay.
A host of memo's fairly set the plan for it. They, they received, uh, separate CARES Act funding, uh, just for the election itself, this past presidential election on November 3rd. Uh, they bought some additional equipment, had, uh, some, uh, safety, bought several of the safety shields for use at the polling sites, cleaning supplies, a lot of different things. Uh, we had a total of $57,177. We currently have a remaining balance of $16,692.91 and they're requesting to pay, uh, each precinct worker and the, uh, employees and part-time employees who worked during the early voting period prior to election day. Since they were in a, uh, position where they were exposed to the public, it, it is, it has been, I, I think I included a copy of the letter from the State Department of Elections there stating, stating that would be in allowed use. Uh, but what they're requesting is $133 for precinct workers and $750 for the full and part-time employees who worked during the early voting period. Total cost of that request would be $14,942.88.
Just to be clear, this is coming from our $4 million source?
No, 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 no. This is completely a different set aside specifically and only for election expenses that's over and above any other funding that was provided to the county.
I'll take that in.
Put that in motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion and we table that and take it up in closed session along with the request from the 34th Clerk's Office.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
All right, can I make that motion?
Yeah.
If you could, add the woman's quote.
Okay.
Get a woman's quote.
I'll second that, all in favor, six to five say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, that next one will be, uh, D 911 Director of Resignation.
Chairman, current 911 Director has tendered his resignation effective December 26th. Uh, would request to discuss that position in closed session with the board.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is Commissioner of Revenue Request for Budget Funds Transfer.
I don't have a covered memo on that. He's pretty much covered this. He's had, uh, two employees who tendered their resignation. He, uh, he has a very small pot of part-time funds available from the board, but those have to be matched 50% from the county. He's not asking for any additional funds in his budget. He's asking to transfer $1,900, uh, out of his travel lodging and subsistence line, uh, to the temporary employee lines to match that with, so he can put a temporary in place fairly quickly.
I'll make a motion to, uh, transfer those budget funds. Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Grant Rider Contract Expiration.
I should have had this to you last month, but I failed to realize that it expired in November and not December.
I'd like to make a motion and we continue, um, uh, front of... Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we got reports and recommendations from our county attorney.
I don't have anything to report, but maybe on day three, just a request for closed session for investment type of funds. Is that what we need to do that afternoon?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's probably so.
Okay. Okay, next we'll go to reports and recommendations from our county administrator.
I have a few, sorry, chairman. I don't think I had anything like so much, so I gained some extra points there, so I get to spend them tonight.
The first item that I'm sending across to you is, uh, a proposed airport capital improvement program. Uh, the, our airport engineering consultants met with the Airport Authority Board, uh, a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, I forget which. They had developed a, uh, a proposed, this, this has to be updated every year with the FAA and the Virginia Department of Aviation. We receive federal entitlement dollars, uh, that can only be spent on certain things. And then, of course, there are discretionary funds with both the FAA and the Department of Aviation. But, uh, they are looking at, at, uh, projects that, that would serve the airport well as well as would use our entitlement funds. You're allowed to carry them for four years and after that you lose them, uh, on a year-by-year basis. So, uh, you'll see that they've got, uh, in the first year, in the first fiscal year, 2021, 2022, for a pavement preservation project. This would be both design and construction of this. Uh, the pavement is 18 years old, it's reaching a point, there's quite a few cracks. Uh, we, we use in-house labor, uh, to, uh, seal those cracks, fill them, try to keep them covered, but that's only done as time allows. Transfer Station, uh, employees do that work. Get to be quite a bit of that, the gaps are opening up a little bit more. And in order to preserve that pavement, uh, that, that pavement project will be a 2 million plus project. And, uh, to get that on the, uh, once we have to fully pave it, not the preservation project, but to have to repay, it'll be $2 to $3 billion. And, uh, rather than shoot for that money now, the pavement appears to still be in fairly good shape, but they'd like to be able to, uh, to do a pavement preservation project. In the course of that, they would do some test fours to, uh, to analyze the pavement, current pavement situation and condition. And, uh, then would proceed most likely with a seal coat on the entire facility, uh, which would potentially preserve, preserve the pavement anywhere from five to 10 years, which would push it down the road that we would be seeking federal dollars at that point to do that. Uh, the second project, uh, in the 2022, 2023 year is to rehabilitate the electrical system down there. That would be designed in that year and then the following year, we would be going for construction dollars, that would be to upgrade all of the lighting. Uh, right now, everything's the old standard type bulbs. This would be updating everything to LEDs. We have one panel, uh, one crossover, uh, panel that is LEDs. You tell the world the difference in the lighting and those, uh, those, those were, that was done when the new crossover was put in there, probably six or seven years ago. I have yet to change a bulb in any of that. Uh, the others, you're changing bulbs probably, depending on what, what feature it is, what type of lighting it is, uh, at least once a year or so. Uh, so there's a lot less maintenance and, and it would upgrade the lighting on the facility as well. Then for a couple of years, we would skip and then, uh, in year 26, 27 and 28, uh, we would be looking at the potential to design and build another hanger, a box hanger. And again, these projects, uh, as you get further out, you can always amend that from year to year and change the priority order. But this first one would be, uh, the pavement preservation project would be one that we would push for immediately in the upcoming years. So, wanted to put this in front of you and I'd see if the board has any objections. It's been, uh, submitted as a draft to the FAA and the Department of Aviation for comments and feedback from them. Uh, you need buy-in from them on the projects before you, before you actually submit them as your final.
You need motion over?
Uh, that'd be good, have a motion, move forward with it as presented.
So moved. Second, all in favor, six to five say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And this is one that failed to crack somewhere this past summer. For Commonwealth Attorney, uh, Mr. Krivon has reported on the delinquents and cost collections. That office collected $33,245.80 in delinquents and costs in fiscal year 2020. Of that amount, Lee County receives half or $16,622.90 pursuant to the agreement that he has with the board, uh, was to split the proceeds. He was requesting that one half of that $16,000 be transferred into his office's budget, uh, which is a line item for Commonwealth Attorney Collections Program expenses to be used for equipment, training, travel expenses and, and any other necessary expenditures. The remaining $8,311.45 would remain in the county's pocket. As additional revenue for the county. Well, I would be, uh, based on that, he is asking for supplemental appropriation of the $8,311.45.
Motion to approve. Okay, got a motion to approve, got a second? And a second, all in favor, six to five say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This next one is a request from the Transfer Station on the purchase of a new trailer. The, uh...
Mr. You hold on, please.
I can't get one over here, I miscounted the first time. The request in a 15,000 pound, uh, gross vehicle weight tilt trailer, equipment trailer with wooden floor to use for hauling the skid steer, skid steer, sound like Warren Burton is doing it, and tractor to and from the job locations. Uh, the trailer they currently have is a 10,000 pound GBWR. Uh, the skid steer alone weighs 9,800 pound plus attachments, so the trailer is overweight, about 2,000 pounds. Oakwin, uh, is a local dealer, would not consider a trade-in with their current trailer because the frame is bent, uh, from hauling the heavier loads. because the frame is bent from hauling the heavier loads. The other issue with that, the current trailer, is that the ramps on the back of the trailer have to be removed with each uses, they're not the swing-up type. They have to be handled and stored under the trailer for travel purposes, and that creates a situation where employees can, can be hurt from handling those ramps, this has happened recently. So this call was requesting a potential purchase of a trailer. He has cost there from a company of fifty-one hundred and ninety dollars. It's a factory-direct sales agent on that. You'll see it does have the tilt deck. I've never seen one like that with just a half tilt deck, but that way the pullback doesn't have tilt, only the portion that you need to get the equipment of.
Is the plans to try to sell that other trailer, actually get a new one?
Well, the, so one we use now, the one we use now, which we do use it to transport the dumpsters and stuff, and we're moving them back and forth to repairs and stuff, we can keep it, but one of the things that I had mentioned was, the mention was about the aluminum trailer. I took it up to Oakland, too, but they, they said that the market is, it's hard for them to take it on the trade, but they suggested that instead of, that we could try either putting the aluminum trailer on gun deals, and also, they kind of encouraged me to discuss with y'all about putting it on Marketplace. They felt like that we could probably get more out of it at Marketplace because there's such a desire for trailers right now. Because we, we had it modified a little bit, the ramps are a little bit longer, it is aluminum, there's two side load ramps on it, or side load and a rear load, but they suggested going on Marketplace and might could recover more funds back from that, so that was just a suggestion, but it, what I was suggesting was actually using the funds out of our Transfer Station line item, because we've not had a lot of funding go out of that so far this year, so I was, I thought we could use that, and then, you know, when we do haul dumpsters or whatever, we could use the other trailers, it has some damage. It's hard to get much out of one when it's been painted, so it's, it wasn't bringing a lot of money back, I guess, what I'm trying to say, so we can just continue to use it. But the trailer would help with keeping from someone getting hurt, but also the fact that it, we would technically be legal to be on the road hauling it, especially if an accident happened, that would, wouldn't be good, so.
Do you have a trailer now that'll legally haul this much twice?
The only thing we have is behind the dump truck, which the majority of the time, we're taking the excavator, and that has to be hauled with the dump truck, so the skid steer we pull behind the Ford, because we got the, we got the bucket, the bucket forks usually in the bed of the truck or on the front of the, the other trailer, but anyway, I mean, we, like, well, like Kiyoki, we took, you know, we kind of worked the road and stuff, we had the excavator, we was getting the trash up and stuff, we picked through all the trash from the bays, but we had to, we had to cut it for the weight, we had to cut the road where it packs hard with the excavator, and then we use the skid steer and stuff to spread the gravel back out and move the dumpsters, and so it's usually, we usually take both machines when we do a complete site work, because we're moving so much, the dumpsters and working sites, and so we're usually pulling both, both machines usually when we go to the sites and we're working.
Is that a pinwheel trailer that you haul the excavator with?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, I've never seen a trailer like that, that dig up in the middle like that, well, I understand that as far as unloaded, is the equipment to go to unload it, and that's my sound like a dumb question, but like when you take that excavator, you go back and up, will it clear that?
The excavator won't. The excavator, we still need to haul the big truck, but the skid steer we use on this when we pull it behind the Ford, so.
Gotcha.
But.
That's just my only concern there, because I've not given it.
Oh, no. It wouldn't handle, it wouldn't handle excavators, excavators, it's almost, almost twenty thousand.
Okay. Okay, I got you.
Gary, what does that do, when that, when you're backing that back, does that just automatically come up, or you have to?
No, it has a, it has a hydraulic cylinder and its own tank, so what it does is, with the cylinder, when you back off the trailer, all it does is, instead of going out and it just dropping just instantly, the cylinder just takes the pressure and just allows it to slowly drop off, so, so it acts the same way when you pull up on it.
Yeah.
Instead of slamming down on the trailer frame, it just, the pressure will go into the tank and just allow the, the deck just to slowly level back out. I had some, which, I don't know if I gave you all, all, but there's, there's more pictures here, more details about the trailers, there's about four or five.
I gave you everything you gave me.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Yeah, well, Oakland's, when I talked to them, their price on a trailer was fifty-six hundred, but they couldn't tell me, he said they'd actually had one on order now for about eight months, and he said, I can't tell you if we'll ever get one in, because they said, and then Big Tex, Charlie Cutney, they shut their whole plant down, so, but this is straight from the plant.
So what does this cost, Gary?
Uh, fifty-one hundred and ninety dollars. All, all the settlement at the plant said that they just needed a five hundred dollar deposit, and then they would build it.
What's the, I don't know if this is states or state question, what's the county's rule on procurement, I know the state's a hundred thousand, but what's the county's rule on advertising procurement?
It's laying on my desk. It's outdated, and that's why I want the update.
I was thinking twenty-five hundred dollars, something really small, but it may not be.
I, I think we can, I think ours even, states, we can maybe, without looking, I would can tell you, I started to say ten thousand without taking bids, but we still have to take quotes, but it may be the twenty-five hundred, but, you know, we can take quotes, we don't necessarily have to do bids, seal bids on it, but as long as we make it competitive. And I'll probably bring a procurement policy update either in January or February.
Y'all want to add that to the closed session, I hope?
I sure that we're going to have to be, we're running the illegal right now, we're going to fix it, but.
Well, I agree, I understand that. I'm, I'm opposed to that, I don't want to violate the rules, but.
If you want to table it, so I can look at it.
Yeah. Now, let's do that, so we won't be violation of that, not violating it, so we can make the legislation table. Okay, second, and all in favor, but I, I, anya, vote.
I have one other item that I was going to present and open, but it doesn't, it does contain pricing, and because of that, I don't hold it until we get to closed session.
So that's all you got?
Yes.
Okay, any reports and recommendations of the board before we get a request to close session?
All mine in closed session.
Do what?
All of mine, I won't take it in closed session, bro.
No, I don't have any. I don't have any. Okay, we've got a request for closed session. Get a motion, all, but we need to go into closed session.
I make a motion, we go in the closed session for two decks, thirty, seven, eleven, sub eight, sub one, six, and eight. Personnel expenditure, public funds, and consultation accounts.
I'll second that, all those, six to five, say aye?
Aye.
Anya, vote. We have that in closed session.